Good evening, everyone. Is that on? Can you hear me? Okay. Oh, I have to use the gavel. Good evening, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the November 22nd, 2021, Meeting of the Collingswood Board of Education. Notice of this meeting has been appropriately advertised. Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Here.
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Henry?
Yes, here.
Ms. Mello?
Here.
Ms. Rivera?
Here.
Ms. Sherry and Celia?
Here.
Mr. Stauds?
Here.
Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Mrs. Kayden?
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands for the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our schedule of events is a little bit different tonight, which is very exciting. We're going to start with presentations because we have a sneak peek for the Collingswood Middle School Musical, Honk Junior. So, I don't know if they can hear me, but they should start coming in. Thank you. And we should move out of the way so that they can. You guys are good. This row might need to move over because this is going to be their stage. All right, so, once they come in, please welcome the Collingswood Middle School staff, or staff, Honk, Honk Junior. I want to see him.
Hi, everybody. I'm Charles Hartung. I am the Performing Arts Coordinator for Collingswood Public Schools, and I am the Director of our Middle School Musical this year, which is titled Honk Junior. So, Honk Junior is our show based on the story of The Ugly Duckling, with original music by George Styles and Anthony Drew. We have about 40 Collingswood Middle School students in our cast from grades six, seven, and eight. Back here. Yep. Represented from all five of Collingswood's elementary schools. We are performing next weekend back indoors in the Collingswood Middle School Auditorium, December 2nd, 3rd, and 4th at 7:00 p.m., as well as a matinee performance on December 4th at 1:00 p.m. You can get tickets at the door, but this year we are doing a reserved seating policy where you can go online to our website, which is collingswoodtics.com, and choose your seats because we are blocking seats apart from groups to enforce a little bit of social distancing. Masks are required at all times in the school building, of course. Our performers will be wearing masks, and you will be too. Tickets are $10 for adults and $5 for students, any age, as well as seniors. And they are a really awesome group, and I'm very lucky to have the opportunity to direct and teach them along with my staff, Mr. Brian Gross, who is somewhere back there, and our choreographer, Ms. Latoya Goodall, who's back there recording me right now. So, I'm going to hand the microphone over to Cassidy Riley, an eighth-grade student who is playing our lead role of Ugly.
Hi, I'm Ugly, or at least that's what people call me. I just hatched in the duck yard, and nobody seems to like me because I'm different than everyone else. My brothers Billy, Beaky, Downey, and Fluff all tease me, and my dad, Drake, seems to think I should be in someone else's family. The only one that's on my side is my mom, Ida. She taught me how to swim and to beware of that sneaky cat. I just wish that everyone else in the duck yard would support me for who I am.
Thank you to the cast of Honk Junior. I know they probably can't hear me right now, but that was an incredible preview. I hope everyone that hasn't already bought their tickets will go do so now at collingswoodtics.com because I think it will be a very fun show to go see. So, moving on to the next presentation we have, which is admittedly a hard act to follow with Honk Junior for the HIBP self-assessment, but Mr. Hammack, sorry. You're up.
I'm not going to sing. All right. No, I can't dance either. Okay, for the annual HIBP self-assessment report, this is where the schools, I'm going to say, brag about the programs that they have at each school for the state report. There are eight core elements with different scores. The highest score would be a 78. To be, to meet all requirements, each school has to have the 52 points, which is, out of 78, which is 67%. Our average district score is 72.3, which is 92.7%. This also allows the schools to see where the work is needed, or, you know, the job that they're doing is doing very well. The district's top component continues to be the core element seven, investigation procedures. And the core element that needs the most improvement is element one, okay, programs approaches and initiatives. And this is probably because of the pandemic and not having the programs in person like they had in the last two years. So, overall, the schools are doing a great job with the, with the programs that, under these circumstances. They are starting, yes. They're going on. Okay? Thank you.
Sorry, everybody. Dr. McDowell, can you give us the 2021-2022 School Bus Emergency Evacuation Drill Report?
Yes, so, good evening, everyone. School bus evacuations are part of the general safety practices. Even though we do not have our own buses, we are still, by statute, required to participate and observe the practices from our vendor. We have several vendors that performed their evacuations for the, for this past month: InRoute Bus Service, First Student Safety, Holcomb, Hillman, and MayTav Bus Company. And the evacuation date and person overseeing the drill is attached in Section 3.03.
Thank you. All right, so now we're going to move to Section Four, Committee of the Whole. Do I have a motion to enter Committee of the Whole?
So, move.
Second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, for this evening, we just had really two, two items that we wanted to bring up for discussion. First was really just any updates to any, you know, updates to the COVID protocols, or just kind of, I guess, a status report on how things are going in this new era with COVID. Anything new we need to know, Dr. McDowell? That was the first part. And then I know we wanted to kind of just remind everyone to be, to remember that COVID's still out there for, as we enter holiday season. So, any, any new COVID updates for us?
So, no, I do want to acknowledge just a few things and a few individuals. Mr. Hammack has actually stepped out, but District Supervisor Ron Hammack has been leading our comprehensive COVID testing program this year. We began our testing protocols in concert and partnership with a lot of key stakeholders on October 18th. As a result, we have so far performed 644 tests. Almost 400 individuals have been tested, and we have identified two positive cases. The purpose for testing is to be able to identify potential areas or pockets of potential viral prevalence or presence in order to make sure that we can deliver on the promise that we stated at the beginning of this school year, which is to keep schools safe, but to also keep them open. So, special thanks to Mr. Hammack, but more specifically, and even bigger thanks to all of our school-based educators who have been rigidly adhering to the safety protocols and practices and the contact tracing and the cohorting, the hand washing, the social distancing. So, it's been a lot. And I just wanted to publicly acknowledge that our staff have really done an outstanding job, and as a result, we've been able to keep, spread to an absolute minimum. We've been able to keep our schools open. We've been able to keep the majority of our students in school, and we will continue to do so. So, I just wanted to formally acknowledge and thank all of our staff for the multitude of safety practices and protocols that they're doing, that many of them never thought that they would have to do. The second piece is that we are in the process of scheduling a vaccine clinic for young people ages five to 11. We heard back today from the Department of Health, and we are seeking to schedule no less than one, preferably two, round-one vaccination clinics for our youngest learners as a, as a community service to our families who may be having a difficult time scheduling a pediatric appointment or getting into their local pharmacy. So, details will be made available next week on, on dates and times, and it will not just be for children, it'll be for anyone who is interested in participating in that, that service. In terms of our, our protocols and practices, we are continuing to stay the course. We're continuing to follow the science. I would like to, just to reiterate what President Kayden also shared, is that as we prepare for the long weekend, time for fellowship with our friends and our families, and to give thanks, still, please be mindful that Camden County, as well as much of the tri-state area, are still in high transmission rates. So, please be mindful of your surroundings. Please be mindful of the individuals that are within your company, within your homes. Please try to adhere to the safety practices and protocols that have kept us all healthy and have kept us all coming to school. We have made the decision to not go into remote instruction the week following Thanksgiving because we believe that we don't need it. We believe that our community has really taken things seriously, but we still want to remain vigilant in order to make sure that we are not creating future challenges in terms of our ability to keep schools open and to keep them safe.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo, I'm just incredibly grateful for and proud of the, you know, every, everyone within the Collingswood Public Schools community, really, right? The, you know, the teachers, the staff, all of this extra work that they, they never anticipated they need, they would need to do have really stepped up. The school nurses have really stepped up. And also, the, I mean, I'm in awe of the kids and how great they've been at, at, you know, wearing masks and distancing when needed, and that we've been able to, to maintain our schools in a way that not everyone has been able to do. And I'm really proud of our community for, for being able to do that. Did any board members have any questions or anything they wanted to bring up in the, the COVID realm before we moved on to the next topic?
I just had a question about...
So, yes, numbers, numbers are going up. One of the data management challenges is that we have partnered with the New Jersey Immunization Information System, so the NJIIS, which is the database of any and all individuals who were, who have received any, any of their immunizations in the state of New Jersey. However, because we're in a tri-state area, and some families' primary care physicians are in Pennsylvania, that data is not present in the New Jersey system because they don't communicate back and forth. So, we're currently in the process of reconciling our records. Right now, we're approaching about 60% of the New Jersey immunized students. We know that that number is greater, but we're still trying to figure out how do we reconcile that in terms of Pennsylvania and even Delaware, in terms of their records of immunization. We know that there is going to be continued questions and hesitancy as it relates with immunizations in general, and part of our responsibility is just to provide a service and then to provide access to information so that families can make informed choices about their children. But we do believe that it is going to continue to go up, especially given families want to go back to normal as quickly as possible.
Does that 60% include the five to 12-years-old?
That does not. That includes children 12 to 17. So, our middle school and our high school are making really good progress in terms of vaccination. We do not, it's so, so, at the very beginning stages of elementary, we know that we've had almost 100 elementary students so far that have gotten their first shot, so we're going to continue to monitor. We, we monitor this on a weekly basis.
Any other questions or comments on the, the topic of COVID from board members?
It's good to hear that the numbers of vaccinations are going up. My, my boys will be getting their second shot on Wednesday, so we're excited about that and where we are with them being able to get access to the shots. With the vaccine clinics that we're thinking of setting up here, is that something, like when and where? What are the considerations there to ensure that the folks that aren't able to get there can access these?
So, the, the most appropriate place, based on flow, access, is at the high school cafeteria. So, we are planning for the high school cafeteria. One of the specifications from the Department of Health is to have separate entrances and exits with good flow in terms of space, lots of lighting, and then just access to be able to set up both inside and outside in terms of, of bringing individuals in, having a sufficient space for the 15-minute holding or, or observation area. Because we're talking about children, we're going to have more individuals in the space, so we needed to have a really large location because we know that at least one, if not two, parents will be with their children in the observation area. So, we believe that the high school cafeteria is the most appropriate place. We have successfully had three vaccine clinics in that location, and that seems to be the, the optimum space.
Just had one quick question on the testing program. So, we've had two positives out of 644 tests. How does that compare with the, the rest of the state, if you have any idea? And is this really doing what we needed it to do by, you know, identifying these cases? Have we been able to isolate the kids? What, just give me some follow-up.
So, we have not, we haven't really compared ourselves with some of the other districts, but I will tell you that throughout Camden County, there have been multiple classroom closures. There have been, within the region, there have been multiple school closures, and we have been able to avoid all of those scenarios. So, in, in terms of a direct comparison, we would have to, to look at the data, but based on the, the reporting and based on the meetings with all of the chief school administrators within the region, this is a problem that everyone is really trying to solve. And in most cases, when organizations have been pretty consistent, but pretty rigid in terms of their multi-tiered approach, they have been more successful than groups that are playing fast and loose with the science.
Yeah, oh, thank you.
Sorry, I forgot. I don't have a lot of voice. Is there a reason why the clinics are being limited to round one only of vaccination?
So, it, it, it wouldn't be limited to round one. It's just we're targeting five to 11, but any individual, whether they are Collingswood, Oakland, or Woodland, can actually come and participate, and whatever level in terms of the shot that they, they can get. Generally, it depends on what their first dose was that kind of determines that. So, right now, what we're looking at is what's been approved for children ages five to 11. So, that, that, so that's who we're really kind of targeting at, at this particular moment.
Thank you. And there will be a follow-up clinic for the third, third week?
Yes. So, when you schedule, you schedule for your first and your second at the same time. So, we're hoping to have two opportunities between now and January, and then with the requisite, with the subsequent follow-up for both of those clinics. We should be able to confirm hopefully tomorrow, and then we would make the announcement either tomorrow or Wednesday about the dates for the clinics, and then begin to advertise for those dates.
I think that's a great service that we're offering, and I'm really pleased to see that we're continuing to, to offer more as we can, particularly for the, the younger kids as well. Sorry, one, one last check. Any other COVID comments, questions? Okay, so then I'm going to move on to, to the second topic, and then we'll be done. So, I, I wanted to just take a moment to, to talk a little bit about what a communication difference that, that I think, I don't think any board members necessarily are, are experiencing it, but, but I know it's been out there kind of in the community and thought that it would be useful to take some time to talk it through about some growing pains from when you get a change in leadership, how, how best to get in touch with someone when, when you have an issue that you'd like to address. And, and I think a lot of families got very used to kind of going straight to, to the superintendent to, to ask about any number of topics, and I think it would be safe to say that Dr. McDowell's leadership approach is a bit different, and he would really like to, to elevate the, the role of the principals to be their, the parents first, well, teachers and principals, I guess, to be the, the parent's first go-to, to reach out with, with communication issues. Would that, would that be correct?
Yes. Yes.
And so, I thought maybe just a quick kind of review of, of, I guess, chain of command would be the way to, to, to say it technically, but that kind of feels very generic and, and more that, you know, if, if a parent has, so I was just kind of, kind of do a scenario and tell me if this sounds right. If, if a parent has an issue with, with something that's going on in their, their kid's school, let's say it's a change in how school parties are happening this year, the person that they should reach out to is their...
Teacher.
Teacher. And then if the teacher isn't quite sure of the answer, the teacher would be the one to elevate it, to, to, to direct them towards the principal. Would that be the right way that parents would expect that to happen?
In most cases, I would say that that would be appropriate at the elementary level. At the secondary level, if there is a school, a school-wide question...
Right.
It would be either the principal or the vice principal. If it is a classroom-specific, it's always, the primary point of contact for most issues are going to be the, the classroom educator. If it's something that is school-wide, then the school building administrator would be the primary point of contact.
Would that be the case even if it's a school-wide question about, let's say, a curriculum program? Still, email the, the principal, and then the principal may direct it off to the, this, the curriculum supervisor or something like that, would you say?
Yes, we want, we want schools to be the primary area of focus. So, for example, if we're talking about, so I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to pick on the high school. So, if we're talking about the history curriculum or the US history curriculum, primary point of contact would still be the US history teacher.
Right.
If it is beyond the scope of that teacher, we do have a district supervisor that helps support history that could then weigh in and provide additional resource, support, or information to the family. But the primary point of contact should always be the individual closest to the question, which would be the classroom teacher first, the administrator second, and then the district would be after those had been fully exhausted.
So, then, can you, can you think of any examples where directly emailing the superintendent would feel like the appropriate thing to do?
So, the, the superintendent's core responsibility is to make sure that the needs of family members are being met. However, the superintendent doesn't work directly in the school. So, if a community member would email me requesting something about a curricular issue in second grade...
Right.
I'm going to automatically go back to the school because I don't teach second grade. So, in, in terms of being able to... So in, in terms of being able to identify who has the appropriate information to be able to quickly help that community member, that would be our, that would be our, our process. I think that in situations where a community member has exhausted and gone through the, not necessarily the chain of command, but the, the contact list for information, and there have been needs that have been unresolved, then it's perfectly appropriate to bring that to the board office.
Okay. Does anybody else, I mean, I know we've kind of talked about this, so if, if I'm missing something or missing a scenario that might be helpful, please chime in. Go ahead.
I don't have a scenario, but the way you laid it out, it sounded like if a parent goes to a teacher, it's on the teacher to escalate it to the principal, and then it's on the principal to escalate it. I'm assuming that there is a stage where if the parent feels as though it got stuck somewhere in that chain, that there's some documentation or someplace that they can push this forward, or they're entirely dependent on the, the principal and teacher to escalate it?
So I would say that it's, it's based on, it's based on a, a conversation. You know, nine times out of 10, most of the questions can be answered at the classroom level. In cases where they're not, they could elevate that to the principal. And most of the school-based questions that come in can really be resolved at the local level, and that's really what we want to continue to encourage. There are undoubtedly going to be sometimes breakdowns or gaps in communication, and the board office is here to be able to fill in those gaps when and if they emerge.
Okay, I, thank you. I just thought it would be helpful to maybe give some, some of those scenarios or, or clear up some things because I, I definitely don't want any, you know, community members to feel like they're not being heard or their, their concerns are not, are not being heard. And, and I think, you know, kind of the more we can encourage everyone to, to know where to go or where to start with an issue, the, the, the better all of, all of us would be for it. So I think, you know, emphasizing starting out, keeping it, like you said, at the local level, because those are, those are the places where most of the answers are going to be met anyway is, is a great reminder.
There's one last thing I'd like to, to note. So since last year, we have been submitting a weekly update. Our weekly update goes out to both the Collingswood School Community as well as the Oakland School Community. And the, on the last page of every weekly update says, "I have a question, who should I contact?" So in an effort to be responsive, we wanted to make sure that families knew who to contact for what. So I'm just going to read it really quickly. Teachers, the primary point of contact for questions and concerns related to your child's school is their classroom teacher. Our educators are experts, and they're standing by to be able to meet the, the needs of all students. Principals are in place to provide support for unresolved questions or concerns related to your child's school. We've given all of the phone numbers and email addresses and the names of all of our campus leaders. If there is a question related to special education or IEPs or case managers, the case manager is the primary point of contact for all of our children with learning differences. When and if a challenge emerges as a result of the IEP process that the case manager is unable to answer, our supervisor of special services, Dr. Whitehouse, is in place. Her contact information is also listed weekly. Anything related to data collection, assessment, state-level reporting goes to our district data and performance officer. That information is also there. And if there are questions that relate to district-wide curriculum instruction, our chief academic officer and our assistant superintendent of curriculum and instructions contact information is also made available. So we make it a point to send the primary contact information of individuals who can address very specific questions weekly. If it falls outside of what we have published, please don't hesitate to contact the board office for additional information.
Question.
Is there any reason why it's only sent to Collingswood and Oakland and not Woodland? Is there only, is there any reason why it's only sent to Collingswood and Oakland and not Woodland?
So the students that are from Woodland are in the distribution lists for Collingswood High School. I know that superintendent, superintendent for Woodland sends, communicates directly with Woodland families that are K to eight. So we communicate with Woodland families nine to 12.
I have, I'm sorry, I have a question too. It looks like I was getting those as a board member earlier in the year, and I don't seem to be getting them, and I don't know if we just were getting them earlier because of the reopening, or maybe that was last year, or somehow I've fallen off the list, or do board members not get them if we don't have kids in the district? Maybe that's, that's also changed in my life. So I assume that you do let us know of stuff that's in that weekly update that we, even if we're not parents.
So Sarah, as a, as a non-parent anymore of a student in the Collingswood School District, I guess you would have to sign up for the Community Connection, but as board members, we can also, you know, forward that along to, to you as a, as a courtesy. But I bet that's why you fell off the list at the end of, of last year. I'm sorry to say.
She's not.
Right. But I know there are some glitches with that Community Connection. I know you, you've had that sometimes emails come and sometimes they don't for, for non-family members of the Collingswood District. So I think that's something, you know, that the tech team can, can keep tweaking for sure as well. But thank you for, for having this discussion. Like I said, I thought it was just important to kind of clear some things up for, for the community so that they, they know where, where to go and, and how to, to reach, reach out, who to reach out to, excuse me. I'm going to, to move things around a little bit to get our, our student reps able to, to speak before, before we go through the rest of the things in case they, they need to get home. So, sorry, what am, yes, I do need to go out of committee of the whole. Thank you very much.
Sorry, I just wanted, this isn't actually really a new policy, actually.
No.
It's in the board policies that, I believe it is a chain of command policy, that this is the process that has always existed, or the policy has always existed. So I just wanted to kind of identify that. It's not a change in policy. It's a little bit different philosophy and process, but the, the policy itself has always been to go to the person closest to the issue first and then escalate from there. Right. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, no, thank you for that. You're absolutely right. And yeah, I think we're just, you know, similar to our, our public comment, we're just trying to hold, hold to it more now than, than maybe in the past. So can I have a motion to come out of committee of the whole? Thank you.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now I'm going to ask the, the student reps to, to give their report, please.
So for our academics at our school, more of our seniors have gotten accepted into colleges, including Vivian Corey at University of Hartford, Megan Maraglia at Miller, at Millersville University, Jala, Jala, Jelena, that's what it is, Sparrow at Rowan College of South Jersey, Crystal Rivera at Montclair University and Rowan University, Kenia Graves at Alabama State University, and Reagan Riley at Immaculata University, Rowan University, University of Charleston, University of Southern Maine, and Cabrini University. The, yeah, good, go you. The Panther, the Panther Dream Award has been narrowed down to about 24 students who have moved forward in the selection that has been, that is being decided by Ms. Crevel and Mr. Herman. I believe that is up to a $1,500 scholarship for one of our seniors. And then our athletics. So the girls and boys cross-country teams wrapped up their season a couple weeks ago. Maddie Forrest and Bella Verdon both earned first-team all-conference Patriot Division on the girls' team. Ian Seidel, Tim Hall, Ben Auerbach, and Santiago Caballero, and Jeff Blevins earned first-team all-conference Patriot Division on the boys' team. Our field hockey team made it to the last round of district playoffs, but sadly they lost to Woodbury on November 9th. And the girls and boys basketball trials are starting this week. We had seven girls on the girls' soccer team that also got first-team all-conference Patriot Division, and recently the marching band won their state title. And then for some of our extracurricular activities, we had our annual activities fair on November 10th on the street right outside of the high school cafeteria. The high school spirit week was a success, and the whole school had a fun week of dressing up and decorating hallways. The seniors won overall, and our class president, Josiah Anger, now has the spirit sick. Woo! The homecoming dance was also a success, a bit chilly but still pretty fun. The student council did a very nice job of setting it up and getting everything planned. The student council will also be making sandwiches for needy families who need it for this holiday season. And the Interact Club also helped organize 50 bags worth of Thanksgiving food materials to help out at least 15, 50 families who are in need this holiday season. That's what we have.
Thank you. Congratulations, Reagan, for all, to all of those college acceptances. That was amazing. And congratulations to the marching band. Coming in first in the state is a pretty amazing accomplishment, and yeah, that, that was pretty impressive. So thank you very much. And as always, you are more than welcome to stay and listen to the rest of our meeting, but if you need to get going, we understand that as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Have a great Thanksgiving.
Yeah, you too.
All right, moving back to section five, future dates and miscellaneous information. Just a quick reminder that December, December 1st through the, that's, those dates are not fully right. Just, I think it's the, the first through the fourth is Honk Junior, so please get your tickets. There are some PTA fundraisers, some, some concerts, instrumental and choral concerts coming up, so keep an eye out for all of that as well as singing on the avenue. Section six, routine board business. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the October 2021 school board meeting?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have made it to section seven, which is our first section for public comment. The purpose for this public comment section is to discuss items listed on the agenda. Additional more general comments may be made later in the meeting. The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. The intent of public comment is to give the community opportunity to provide feedback to the board. We will be actively listening and taking notes so that we can take all that is being said into consideration. If appropriate, clarifying communication will go out later in the week, and for more general concerns, they may be discussed by the board during future committee meetings. So if anyone would like to, to come up and speak, the microphone is here. That's what I thought, but just wanted to read my thing. Okay. Section eight, superintendent's report, Dr. McDowell.
Section 8.01 is the enrollment report. So October of 2020 enrollment was 2215. October 2021 is 2268, and the enrollment report is attached in 8.01. In 8.02 is the emergency drew report for the month of October. Point 03 is the suspension report for the month of October. Point 04, there are no anti-bullying reports at this time. And point 05, there are no policies needing a first read at this time.
I have a question about the suspension report. In the suspension report, there's a section that says AIR, Air Report. What does that stand for?
So that's, it's an in-school intervention or in-school suspension environment.
Okay, thanks.
Section nine we just did. Section 10, the Business Administrator Board Secretary report, Ms. Coleman.
This evening, I'm seeking approval, okay, item 10.01 is your October monthly transfers. 10.02 is your October treasurer reports and secretary's report. 10.03 is your student activity cash reports. 10.04 is your food service financials for the month of October. 10.05 is a listing of other purchase orders that were issued in the month of October, and 10.06 is a listing of all the warrants to be paid tomorrow morning.
Thank you. Section 11, the Buildings, Grounds, and Finance Committee. Mr. Craig, can you take us through that agenda?
The Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Committee reviews all financial statements, purchase orders, and warrants on a monthly basis. The committee also reviews and approves all contracts with outside service providers and oversees all maintenance and capital improvement projects district-wide. We do not have any items today other than the board secretary's report, so we are seeking approval of 11.02 to 11.09, which are all of the reports that Ms. Coleman shared, just shared.
Happy Thanksgiving to you. That was an easy report. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Sheridan, Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes, abstained on 11:09.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes.
Ms. Kayden?
Yes. Next, we have section 12, the Curriculum Committee. I will do this for, for Ms. Severino this evening. The Curriculum Committee oversees and approves the district curriculum and assessment programs as well as field trips, home instruction, co-curricular programs, and the school calendar. Items 12.02, 03, and 04 are field trips for the elementary school, middle school, and high school. 12.05 are out-of-district and home instruction placements, and 12.06 is approval of the 2022-2023 preschool plan that is being sent to the, the Department of Ed. So look, seeking approval for items 12.0, is this right? 12.03 to 12.06? Because there weren't field trips for the first two? Okay. So do I have a motion?
And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members?
The preschool plan, looking into that, the numbers, I think came out like something around 68% of who was serving. Just curious in terms of where the total population is coming from and then how we're getting to that 68%.
Luckily, Mrs. McPartlin's in the audience, but I believe they take, for your universe, correct me if I'm wrong, Jen, they double your first grade.
Okay.
And the 68% is based on the capacity, the classrooms that we have between the preschool center, the classes we rent in Oakland, and the classes we have in district as well as the Head Start. And then you get a 15 kids per class. So that's going to 15 kids in every available space that we have available to us now. I don't think we can get above 68% until we do something with facilities or we find space somewhere. Hopefully I said that correctly, Jen? Okay.
Any other questions or comments from board members?
To jump onto that question, it, do we, like, what percentage of, of folks are requesting to enroll and not being able to enroll because of capacity issues for preschool?
I don't know the percentage. I know on any given day, we, we do have a waiting list. I don't know if you know the percentage, Jen, like?
I don't know. I mean, I'm a little off, but I know the percentage, but we have operated a waiting list here anywhere else. Last year, obviously, we were running a 99% of the lot, you know, it was a big concern. This year, we did have a waiting list, and then when the pandemic came out, a lot of people, I think we did have time to decide that, but it's probably, I don't know, it's a complicated program. So right now, we're currently on a, with most of our classrooms around the waiting list. But given the, the pandemic is coming, that's the, 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 um, in the state, sure, we're probably, um, in the, in the, um, 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 the,
And you're not quite sure of the percentage, but may be able to look that, that up for us later.
Currently, we don't have anyone on the waitlist.
All right.
I'd also like to make note that the state's plan is to reach universal pre-K status within the next 10 years. So just kind of wanted to plant that seed so that if we are in the 60% in terms of our universe, that's a big gap from getting to the 100%.
Do you know how much, how many people are typically on the waiting list? How many families are typically on the waiting list?
The top of my head, I don't, you know.
So 15 to 25, is that more like in the beginning of the school year when enrollment is, is starting?
Yes.
There's like 15 to 25 families that, that aren't able to, to take advantage of the program that would like to. Okay.
How many classrooms is that?
How many classrooms do we have total? Is it 11?
Yeah, it's about 11 classrooms.
We have about 11 classrooms with 15 kids per classroom.
So you've got, I'm sorry, you've got two classrooms per?
Right, yes.
I think it might be tough to know the full waitlist just because they haven't had a full year without, be able to get to beginning to end without COVID pandemic. So maybe once, we, we, I anticipate as this, we continue to build this program out, that our waitlist will get bigger if we do not add space, but that's.
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
Is there any talk from the state, you know, if the state's goal is to have 100% universal pre-K in 10 years, is there any talk from the state about potential support for facilities needed to, to?
Ding, 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 ding.
There's talk.
Say, I don't have anything but a snobby response for that.
Nothing substantive at all.
So we were asked, so Collingswood was asked to participate in a roundtable discussion a few months ago with the Assistant Commissioner of Early Childhood Education. So we were part of a good cross-section of school districts across the state, and those are some of the questions that were asked. Before they set out this, this 10-year goal, they did take our feedback. So the feedback that, that I provided for Collingswood was twofold. One was that if, in fact, the state was going to express an expectation for us to reach universal pre-K status, at that particular time, we were roughly at 50% of, of our universe. We presented that additional funding within the preschool grant would need to be made available in order to be able to aggressively reach those numbers over a period of time. And then the second component was twofold. There needed to be additional funding, not just for the acquisition, but also the conversion of existing facilities for preschool seats. So I think that, you know, the number that we were looking at for their conversation was the gap between us getting to universal levels and, and where we were was about 140 children. So based on that 140 children, we would need a significant amount of real estate in order to be able to do that. And in districts like ours, who are landlocked and where buildings are at a premium, there would need to be some level of flexibility from the, the New Jersey Department of Facilities, which historically has not been very accommodating in terms of school districts being creative with the usage of space. So those are some of the pieces of feedback that we provided. We have yet to, to hear back. But we do know that the governor's initial plans are to make some, some strides towards delivering on some of those promises as schools think about moving in that direction in this upcoming budget.
And did you have something to say?
I was just going to add that when they're doing the universe calculations, they're making a large generalization that 90% of your community is going to bring their children to pre-K. Right? So it doesn't account for stay-at-home parents or families that just prefer to keep their children home. There's a large expectation that 90% of the community is going to start their children for full day at, at three years old. Which as an advocate, I strongly encourage families to bring their children to pre-K. But especially now where across the state, every school district is operating like 50% of their seats. Their parents just aren't bringing their children in.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes, and I'm going to abstain on 12.06.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Sheridan, Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes, except on 12.02 where I abstain.
Mr. Bowman? Mrs. Kayden?
Yes. Section 13, the Personnel Committee, Ms. Sheridan, Celia.
The Personnel Committee reviews all recommendations for teaching and staff employment, considers co-curricular employment, and considers all professional development opportunities for staff members. Agenda item 13.02 is a resignation. 13.03 through 13.05 are federal and/or state leave notices. 13.06 to 13.12 are various new hires. And 13.13 and 13.14 respectively are for the high school and middle school extra-class coverage that's needed. 13.15 and 16 are social work interns, revised contract and an intern placement. 13.17 is a revised contract. 13.18 is a transfer. 13.19, student-teacher practice placements and observations for two different schools. 13.20 is winter middle school athletic stipends. 13.21 are winter high school athletic volunteers. 13.22 is custodian, part-time substitute list. We're skipping over 13.23. 13.24 substitutes and tutors. 13.25 is the travel expense form. And 13, so at this point, we are going to make a motion to table 13.23. Okay.
So do we have a motion, or you're making the motion to table?
I am.
So do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And more generally, I'm seeking approval of 13.02 through 13.22, as well as 13.24 and 13.25.
Do I have a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
And a second? Questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Sheridan, Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes, except those items marked with a double asterisk where I abstain.
Mr. Bowman? Mrs. Kayden?
Yes, except for item 13.12 where I abstain. And moving on to Section 14, which I guess is miscellaneous, miscellaneous slash policy committee? That one, that one, I think it's supposed to be policy committee. So, Mr. Connor, could you run through that for us, please?
Sure.
The Policy and Regulation Committee reviews all updates and changes to district policy and regulation. 1402 is the second reading. These are mandatory policies. The Emergency Virtual and Remote Instruction Program and the Sexual Harassment of Students. Is that a, sorry, well, it's a first reading.
For a regulation.
Yeah. Sorry, so the, those two policies and then a, a regulation. This is a first reading. This is a recommended regulation change for sexual harassment of students. These are the HIB report.
Right, just you say that too, because we're quoting on this.
All right. So we have 1404. We have the HIB reports from the previous month. And 1405 is the 2122 NJQSAC Annual Statement of Assurance. And that's it. So we need approval for 1402 to 1405.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve those items? And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members?
I have a question about the, the HIB report. Looked in the report and there was a event in September that was reported to superintendent in October, I think October 18th, past the 13-day threshold that I think it's supposed to be reported in. I was wondering if there was more information about why we're going past that, that threshold, that timeframe.
It may have gotten buried. It, it may have gotten buried in the timeline in which I received it. Generally, when I receive them, I, I look at them that day. Sometimes they, they come late. But it doesn't appeal, it, it, it doesn't ring a bell as being a unique circumstance.
If it, if it got buried as your report, is, that is not to mean it was not being taken care of at, in the appropriate manner at whatever school it was, it was reported at. Is that correct? Is this just a reporting to you?
Yeah, reporting to me. So after the investigations are done, there is a process where they get signed off at the local school at, at post-investigation, and then they get them to our office. Sometimes there's an unfortunate lag time between transporting from the school to, to the board office.
Thanks.
We try to make it so that that's not the case, but sometimes it, it does, it does happen.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Sheridan, Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes.
Mrs. Kayden?
Yes. And now we have Section 15, our second opportunity for public participation. Please stand, state your name and address, and keep your comments to five minutes or less. And the public is reminded to resolve all concerns and complaints first through appropriate staff members and administrators. Do we have any public participation at this time? Okay. So now we need to, the board needs to go into an executive session to discuss a personnel matter. There, we will, we will most likely be coming back to, to vote on an action item after the fact. So you are welcome to wait in the hallway if you so choose. But at this time, we're going to need to ask those sitting here to, to step out so that we can enter executive session.
We need a motion to.
I know, I just wasn't sure if I could do that before or after everyone left.
No, yeah, okay.
We're going to check on all of that, so.
Yes, it will. I just need a motion.
So I guess, can I get a motion to enter executive session?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we're going to pause for a minute. Everyone turn off your microphones, and we're going to do the live stream. Turn it off. Okay. Motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So can I get a motion to put item 13.23 on the Personnel Committee agenda back on the agenda?
So moved.
And a second? Now can I get a motion to approve item 13.23? And, questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Sheridan, Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mr. Bowman? Mrs. Kayden?
Yes. And with that, we move to Section 16. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting this evening? And a second?
Second.
We are going to that. Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Everyone have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Thank you.